Good morning.
Good morning.
I think we're on. Welcome, Happy New Year, and welcome to the January 3, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting. We will administer the oath of office here. So if everyone could please step up front. Or Randy whoo. Okay.
I, Jeff Bertram.
I, Jeff Bertram.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully execute.
And that I will faithfully execute.
And discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Sterns County Commissioner, District 3.
Sterns County Commissioner, District 3.
In the county of Sterns.
In the county of Sterns.
State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability and understanding.
And to the best of my ability and understanding.
Not yet.
Okay.
We don't have our numbers on.
Corrections, I get these big numbers.
So I'm not going to make a long speech, but I just want to say I feel very honored to be asked to be here and administer these oaths. I've been in charge since 2020 when I was appointed by Tim Palenti. And this is only the second time that I've gotten to do it. But I was really honored when newly elected or now Commissioner Bertram asked. I'm a little surprised because he knows all of my extended family. I'm from Freeport to Hanen. And so that's why Commissioner Notch doesn't ask me to do these things. But I've never seen such a group of hardworking individuals with such diversity. And I feel like we are all really blessed to have them here and willing to step up and do the work that they're doing. And I say that because a lot of people feel like, oh, it's just the Commissioner and they get together every now and then. But it's not. I've seen these people in the community and people come up to them 24 hours, seven days a week. And it's a never-ending job, unlike many of us who go to work. You know, sometimes when I'm on call once every nine weeks, I get a call in the middle and I'm like, these folks are approached all the time and they're always being watched by you, their citizens. And so it really is appalling that they've been willing to step up and do this job. And so I thank you all for willing to be a public servant and to give back to the community. So if you are ready, I'll have you raise your right hands and be sworn in. I, please state your name.
Cheryl Clark.
I, do you own person?
Do you live in Maryland?
State not.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully execute and discharge.
And that I will faithfully execute and discharge.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Commissioner District 1.
Commissioner District 2.
Commissioner District 4.
Commissioner District 5.
In the county of Sterns.
In the county of Sterns.
State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability and understanding.
And to the best of my ability and understanding.
Congratulations, ancient. God, just look at me and says, thanks, Judge Meara. Which I love. I absolutely love that. And so my pleasure.
One more.
Well, it's not just one more. There's three other individuals. I remember when, you know, Hannah became the county attorney here. She's been there longer than I have and she's done fabulous and remarkable jobs. Many of you don't know the work that she has done, not just on a statewide, on a management level. She's asked to go to conferences and do discussions about domestic violence and really has been a leader throughout the entire nation, literally. She's put Sterns County on the map. And then, of course, we have Sheriff Soika, and I applaud him. He's one of those individuals who we had to work his way up the ranks. And I remember when he was running and it was a fierce competition, he really had a lot of support from the people that helped lifted him up. And so they all told me his biggest challenge is not wanting to put on his SWAT uniform and go out in the field with them. And so I think that's a real testament to who he is and what he has done to serve our community. And of course, we have Randy Strifels. Randy, how long have you been in office? 24 years. I mean, that, you know, that's how tremendous. And a lot of people feel, again, it's just a public service thing, and I know these people are chomping at bits to get to work. But I think it's just a call for it for us to just pause a moment and to really recognize all the time that they have dedicated to serving experience and community. So I ask you to join me and. And we all look the same since we took office. All right, so I'll raise your right hand. I state your name. You solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And that I will faithfully execute and discharge.
And that I will faithfully execute and discharge.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of. The office of. Call me out your treasure, Sheriff.
Call me, Sheriff. In the county of Sterns.
In the county of Sterns.
State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability and understanding. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. I'm supposed to watch him to paper.
I signed my name. No jokes.
Nope. Uh-oh.
You had a fan?
Yeah, I swear.
You're the wrong guy.
Mary wanted to tell you something.
It's ordered for today.
I don't know.
I do that too. Okay.
Yeah, Janelle's using my pants.
You guys want me to sing a song while we got them?
Yes, yes.
Yes. You don't want me to.
You can do a dance.
You can dance? We can pipe in the music.
Is he the pumpeyah or who let the dogs out?
Thank you.
No, we gotta do that yet. It's coming. I have to do a roll call.
Oh, there it is. I didn't see it.
Well, they started before.
I know. You were trying. My pleasure.
Okay. Thank you, Judge Mahler, for that. At this time, we'll do a roll call. Roll call would indicate all commissioners are present. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first item is reorganization. Randy, would you like to conduct?
So the first thing we'll do is elect the Chair of the Sterns County Board of Commissioners. Are there any nominations for Chair?
I would like to nominate Commissioner Persky for Chair.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? All in favor of Commissioner Persky as Chair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Curried? Then we do nominations for Vice Chair. Are there any nominations for Vice Chair?
I would like to nominate Commissioner Clark for Vice Chair.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? All in favor of Commissioner Clark as Vice Chair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll turn the meeting back over to Commissioner Persky.
You go, Commissioner.
Ask another gavel.
Ask the gavel.
And thank you, Commissioner Notch, for your year of service over the past year. Appreciate all of your efforts and your signatures.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask for a personal point of privilege, please?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to say a few words to those that are watching and my family that are here. First, I'd like to thank everyone for the special swearing and ceremony, Mike and Randy and staff for doing that. Thank you to Judge Mahler for conducting the oath. As she said, I've known her family most of my life, and so that was a special honor and it added a personal touch to it. Certainly, I'd like to thank my wife, Marlene, and our sons, Jacob and Kylie, his girlfriend, and Mitchell, for being here and, once again, being right beside me in our life's journey. It certainly means an awful lot to me. Thank you to my extended family and supporters who are with us, both here in person and watching livestream. Special thanks to our youngest supporters, Claire and Audrey Reichardt, who are here that came out of school today to be with us and that were with us a lot during the last six months. I'd also like to thank Don Williamson for being here as well and being a part of this. I'll never forget the solid, humbling support I received across the district and the thousands of people that we talked to and what they said and what they expect. I want to thank Commissioner Jeff Mergan and Nellie for being here, for joining us. And Commissioner Mergan, I will try to carry on your work as you started 12 years ago. And I'd also like to recognize some of my past Commissioner friends, such as Vince Schaefer, Mark Bermanchenko, Bob Wenzman. I also remember in prayer some of those commissioners that have gone on before us and who's watching, families are watching us this morning, Commissioner Don Adi, Edna Pam Jeff. Certainly think of Don this morning, Heine Dickhouse, Mighty Torberg, Arnie Kuns, Laverne Plattenberg, and so many others. I'm honored to serve where they served and others have served. Alexandra Tenfor once said, "The best teachers are those who show you where to look but don't tell you what to see." I, all five of us, are now leading Sterns County, and I look forward to leading with you and beside you, and I look forward in bringing the message from thousands of people across District 3 and across the county and parts all over to our discussions and to the county services, to them in a friendly customer service way. We're all going to die one day. The goal isn't to live forever. The goal is to create something that will. Let's continue reaching for that goal. And I just want to say thank you to everyone. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Bertram, and welcome aboard. You know what you got yourself into? If you haven't, welcome aboard. And then also, a great thanks, Commissioner Mergan, your years of service are greatly appreciated, so thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Can I motion approve the agenda?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion by Notch, second by Clark. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. The next item we have is the consent agenda. Commissioners, you have items 1 through 15. Are those any of those items that you'd like to move?
Mr. Chair, item number 7 needs to be withdrawn and placed on the next meeting agenda.
Okay. Anything else? Then I'll look for a motion to pass items 1 through 15 with the exception of item 7.
So remove, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have a second?
I can second that.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item we have is administration. Okay, Dr. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you know, you have a number of committee and board appointments to make, and Mr. Hammers is going to lead you through that discussion.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Again, Steve Hammers, Assistant Administrator, and going to walk you through, as best we can, the board and committee appointments for the year. Not all of our board and committee appointments will probably be made today based on the fact that we haven't got recruitment for all of the positions. But again, we'll do the ones we have today and any other ones we can take care of in the future. So as in the past, I'll be walking through each committee on its own, asking for what the direction of the board is. Again, there are some appointments that are based on district, and so I'll ask the Commissioner of that district to confirm what they want to do for that district. And if it's not large, again, this is a discussion of the board. Your options are certainly to make an appointment today. If you need more time for an individual district appointment or an at-large and you want to defer it to another time or do more recruitment, you certainly can. Or if you want to hold separate interviews of individuals as finalists and have a subcommittee of the board conduct those interviews, that's also an option. All right, so without further ado, I also have representatives of the departments here in case there's questions about specific requirements to be on a committee for a department, and we can walk through those as we go through. First is Environmental Services, the Board of Adjustment. I want to make a note from the sheet that was sent out with the board packet that, based on the resolution the board adopted at the last meeting, George Fiedler is going to have to have a new term. And so for District 3, he will have a new term for the years of '23, '24, and '25. Is that still acceptable to Commissioner Bertram? To reappoint Mr. Fiedler?
Yes, he's not in District 3, though, I don't believe. He would be in Commissioner Persky's district.
Well, we're allowing people to flow because of the way the terms and everything overlap.
Absolutely, I accept that. Mr. Fiedler, yes.
Okay. And then on District 5, for Board of Adjustment.
Yes, Steve, I'd like to appoint Amy Sharpe.
All right. That works. For the Delinquent Refuse Account Appeals Panel, we haven't received any applications for that board, so we'll move on to the Fiedler Review Committee. We have one.
Excuse me, excuse me. Go quickly. Just, Mr. Chair, just for Commissioner Bertram, that group hasn't met the whole time. I've all last four years. So it's not something that happens very often, but obviously, if you can identify somebody too, that's good. But just to let you know, some of these, like, hardly ever meet. Some meet a lot.
No, thank you for that, Commissioner Clark. And I just want to make sure I go through all the Commissioner appointments as we go through these two. So again, on that committee, it's listed as Terrell as the representative and Commissioner Notch as the alternate. And that still works?
Yes, especially given how frequently it meets.
Yes, since I don't think they've met in four or five years, I'm sure that one works.
Actually, the good news on that one is that means that people are doing what they need to do. But that's a committee that is good that we don't need and have to need.
All right, correct. Moving on, the Fiedler Review Committee, there's one at-large appointment. You have three individuals who did submit their applications, and that was, those applications were submitted to you by email. Were there any questions or what are the wishes of the board with those three applicants?
I guess I would like to bring Dave Gamrot forward as the at-large.
Is there a, is there a second for that?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. All right, that brings us down to Planning Commission. District 2, I believe you have picked someone?
Yes, Dave Bertram.
All right. Planning Commission, District 4, Lee, do you still want to have Sean Blackburn as your pick for that seat?
Well, he's got time left, right?
No, his term ended and he was in, previously in District 2. His term's over in that district. He's eligible for another term, and he would be in your district.
Oh. Okay, I didn't do my homework on that, but yeah.
Okay.
I can see that.
All right, and then there is the at-large appointment to replace now Commissioner Bertram. Again, there were six individuals who submitted applications that we forwarded to the board. What are the wishes of the board?
Steve, I would like to bring forward Tara Ostendorf as the alternate, or at-large, I mean.
We had some really good ones. I mean, I would certainly second that. I, again, we have put in place some goals about trying to broaden who is involved in each of our committees. This is our one remaining one that still has no women, even though they make up half the population. And she's well qualified. We had several people who were very well qualified.
It was nice to see we had a lot of applicants.
I agree, we had some choice candidates there.
Okay.
As far as making motions on this, you can do them all at the end if you'd like.
Okay.
I mean, it's up to you. If you want to do individual ones, that's fine, but you can just kind of do consensus and do it all at the end.
I think it would be best if we did it that way and then had the vote at the end. But if we have opposition, let's clarify to make sure we got the right names in the right place.
Sounds great, Mr. Chair.
So I'm hearing Tara Ostendorf is the board selection? Okay. All right, and then for the commissioners on the Planning Commission, it had been Jeff Mergan as the alternate and Joe Persky as the representative. What are the wishes of the board for this? Any changes? We, does Joe still want to be?
I would like to remain just for consistency. We've got a lot of things that are continuing on. And I guess if Jeff Mergan was the alternate there, of course, Commissioner Bertram has a great experience of being on that Planning Commission as well, he would suit well as being the alternate.
I'd certainly do that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Wetland Appeals Panel. Again, there are three commissioners who sit on that. Commissioner Mergan was the alternate, and Commissioners Lenzmeyer and Notch were the representatives. Any wish to change? Or do we need to at least replace the alternate?
Yeah, it makes sense. I mean, in general, we tend to inherit the committees that the person before us had, so it makes sense to.
Mine shows I'm the alternate on that one.
Your sheet does? All right. I certainly made a mistake. That's fine.
I can't get it to pop up correctly on my screen.
All right, so.
Steve, was there?
Well, on the Wetland Appeals Panel?
Yes.
Mine shows Jeff Mergan and Lee Lenzmeyer, and then Steve Notch as the alternate.
All right, I probably just made a mistake.
Want to do that, Steve?
Yeah, sure.
I'll be the alternate. You get to switch positions.
Okay.
And then we'd have Commissioner Mergan serve on it. No, Mergan, Bertram. Bertram came, was in my head, my mouth. Sorry, sorry, Jeff.
Chris Mergan's a lot better looking than.
You're looking very, you're looking very sharp.
All right, thank you. All right, again, the next committee is the Environmental Services Fee Appeal Panel. And again, this committee hasn't met in at least five years. We haven't received any applications from the public to serve on that panel. And I'm showing Terrell as the representative. Does that still work for you based on its meeting schedule?
Absolutely.
All right. That concludes the Environmental Services Committees. Moving on to Emergency Management, the Regional EMS Committee. I see Steve Notch and Terrell Clark as representatives. Does that still work?
And to clarify, I'm the alternate.
You're the, yeah.
Yes.
All right, seeing no changes. The Extension Committee, we are still looking for one at-large or to see if there's interest for one person at-large. We do have.
Steve?
Two people who.
Go ahead.
We have two, we do have one person who is on the committee now that wishes to continue and haven't seen an application yet. And we do have one person, a new person, who has submitted an application.
Okay, just for some clarification, which I think Gary has expressed interest to continue on, and we haven't heard yet from Ben, if he is or not. We're talking the Extension Committee, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Gene has expressed interest in continuing on, yes. Lower.
Glenn Lower.
Glenn Lower, excuse me.
Yep. Okay, just for clarification, on the Extension, Ann Smith Blakenor is actually going to be District 5. Linda Shay came off for our last meeting, so maybe never got forwarded to you.
Okay.
So we moved Ann to the District 5 because they're both in District 5.
Okay.
So basically, the at-large would be open on the Extension Committee.
All right.
Do we have applications for that one? Or do we need to do some recruiting?
For the at-large.
For at-large, we haven't received any applications yet, so we can, need to continue doing some recruiting there. I'll make the change for District 5. And yes, I didn't get confused between Extension and Dairy Advisory Committee. So Extension Committee, we've solved. Again, District 2, Glenn Lower is who Joe wanted to reappoint?
That is correct.
Okay, so Extension Committee is set otherwise, except for the at-large. Dairy Advisory Committee is the one where we still need one at-large person, where, as Randy said, Gary Schmitz has expressed interest for another term, and we have an application from Lisa Wertz.
And I was going to suggest, and Jeff, I hadn't gotten a chance to talk to you about this, about adding in an alternate, because we do have two members on there, but we don't have an alternate. And there are occasions where one or both of us can't be there, and it would be great if we, if you were able to do that at some point.
I might certainly be open to doing that. This committee process, Mr. Chairman, members, is still somewhat confusing to me. So Randy and I are meeting on some things on the Watershed District after this, and Steve will catch me up a little bit on this, but let's obviously do what we need to do today to keep moving, and there'll be some revisions and then some positions that will be open that we can talk about. So again, Mr. Chairman, on the. So again, on the, Mr. Chairman, on the, if I got the applications, I'm not sure where they are, I can't say that I've gotten them, but then that's fine, but Lisa Wertz for the at-large, is that for the, which position was that, I'm sorry?
Dairy Advisory Committee.
Yeah, she'd be a producer, correct?
Yeah, and I certainly, you know, it's in Commissioner Notch's district, but I know the family, and she milks cows herself, so I think she'd be a great addition.
And if I recall correctly, Dairy Advisory basically ends up picking their own members, where they're advising them.
Yeah.
Yeah, Lisa has been attending the meeting.
Yes, she has, which has been great.
All right. So I'm hearing that Lisa will be appointed, and no opposition to Gary having another term. Okay, we still have one position to recruit for in, in that committee. That takes care of the Extension Department. Moving on to, let's see, sorry, one less than commissioner appointments on that one. So on the Dairy Advisory Committee, we have Commissioner Notch, Commissioner Clark, and now Commissioner Bertram as the alternate. On the Extension Committee, we have Commissioner Notch, and then Commissioner Bertram would be the taking over. Okay. All right, then Highway, the Area Planning Organization Policy Board, we have Commissioner Persky, and Commissioner Lenzmeyer is the alternate. Is that still the wishes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Region 7W Transportation Committee, we have Joe Persky as the representative. Seeing no opposition from Joe.
No, we're fine with that.
The Highway 23 Coalition, we have Commissioner Persky, and he was Commissioner Mergan, so do we want Commissioner Bertram to be the appointment there?
Yep.
If he's willing.
Yep.
Yeah, I'd be willing.
And obviously very engaged.
All right, then we have the Noxious Wade Appeal Committee. There are four individuals from the public on that, they're all providers of the services. They are all willing to have a new term, according to Jody, so that's Glenn Stalbarger, Ken Schaefer's, Randall Rohl, and Todd Menke. And of those, Ken and Todd would be alternates. Is that acceptable to the board? And then on that committee, Commissioner Notch is the representative, and then all of the rest of you are alternates. And I have to admit, I was a little questioning why this committee had needed four alternates.
That actually was going to be my question, especially because it doesn't seem like it meets very often.
It rarely meets, so I'm, I'm wondering if the board wishes to reduce the number of alternates that you have on there?
Has it caused any problems?
I don't know, we grow like weeds on that committee, I don't know.
We're like noxious ones, we're like non-noxious ones.
I guess maybe for purposes of cleaning that up, let's go ahead, let's maybe make a change on that. I don't see necessarily that you have that many alternates.
So you're willing to give up being an alternate?
I'm willing to give up, yeah.
I'm willing to give up being an alternate as well.
All right, striking, striking Terrell and Joe. All right.
Although happy to be called on if you go that deep.
Understood. All right, that takes care of Highway, Human Resources. We have the Personnel Board of Appeals, this committee rarely meets as well. All of its members had termed out. HR has found two individuals to serve so far, Patrick Shepard and Holly Shoner-Her.
They both look good.
Again, to be on this committee, you need to be a HR professional, working in the county. They are still recruiting a final member, and again, if they get that person, we'll bring that forward to you as well. Any objections to having those two serve? Okay? Human Services Board is all of you. The next one we have is the Human Services Advisory Committee. First vacancy is in District Two. Jama Alamad needs a new term, and is that who you still wish to reappoint, Joe?
You're talking about the human services there, yeah, I, the two that were-
So Jama lives in Wake Park?
His desire was to stay on.
Right.
That's possible.
And he needs to get his form in, but I know people are working on that, but he is, he's in Wake Park, so he's not District Four.
Oh.
But there probably is another way to keep him in there.
Okay.
I mean, all right, isn't he in Wake Park? So if we, can we, can we potentially come back with him, and you might need to still look for somebody for two?
All right.
But I know, Melissa, we've been talking about this, he's-
Tremendous asset.
He is a tremendous asset, so we're working on it.
Okay.
Right, I'm seeing, seeing, shaking him hands.
All righty. The next opening is a provider rep, and Kelly Martini has been serving in that, and has submitted her paperwork to be the provider. There were also a couple other candidates, but I know the department's recommendation would be to reappoint Kelly.
And I serve on that, she's doing a fabulous job, and it's her being head of the Childcare Association, too. She's been, that was part of how we got her on there to begin with, because that's such an important area.
Okay. Seeing no objections. Moving on, the Education Rep, there was one application for the education seat, Andrew Schultz, that the department would like to recommend.
Okay.
And then the commissioner on this committee is Terrell Clark. That still works, all right?
Yep.
The State Community Health Services Advisory Committee, we have, again, Commissioner Clark and Commissioner Notch serving on that one.
And this is where Steve and I had swapped with emergency management, so I'm the delegate and he's the alternate, and the great thing about Shaq is we both get to participate, we rarely, it rarely matters.
Moving then to the Community Corrections Advisory Board, District One, I know we're doing some recruitment yet, so we'll have to bring that one back in the future.
And this is where, just so you all know, she, she is now, with redistricting, she's just in a different district, so she's no longer eligible to be in District One, and we've only found that out in December, and we don't meet in January, so we'll be bringing somebody back to the board before then.
All right, and this, this, sorry, District Five is next, and you wish to reappoint Marlene Adi?
Yes.
Okay. And then the commissioner reps on here are, again, are Commissioner Notch and Commissioner Clark. That still works?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
All right, then the Family Services Cooperative Joint Powers Board, we have Commissioner Notch, and we had Commissioner Mergan, so it would be Commissioner Bertram, and Commissioner Persky as an alternate. That still works, everyone?
Sounds good.
All right, then the Coalition Advancing Healthy Families Joint Powers Board, and again, we have Commissioner Clark and Commissioner, Commissioner Notch on that one.
Yes, and I'm the delegate, and Steve's the alternate.
Okay. And then the SHIP Community Leadership Team, Commissioner Clark is the representative.
We haven't met in a very long time. Pre-COIT, hopefully soon.
All right. That concludes Human Services. Moving on to Parks. On this committee, Commissioner District Two, Commissioner Persky, you, you want to-
I'll stay on, yes.
Mark Thompson?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, Mark Thompson on the District Two, correct.
All right. And then Commissioner District Three is open. Commissioner Bertram, I'm, I'm sorry that you haven't got the emails, I'm sure with all the technology issues you haven't got through yet, but all of the applications for you were submitted, but we can certainly wait for your appointment until next meeting, if, if you want time to-
Is Mr. Willenbring eligible for reappointment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, he is.
Then I would favor the continuation as we're doing-
And he has a desire to stay on.
Yep.
And he did submit an application, so yes, we're, we're all good.
Got it.
All right. And then Commissioner Persky, what, you wish to remain the rep from the board there?
Yep.
All right, AMC Delegates, that's everyone. As we move through the non-departmental committees, the Career Solutions Joint Powers Board, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, and would now be Commissioner Bertram.
Excuse me, Mr. Hammons, on the AMC Delegates, do you, do we not say which committees are going to serve on, or have we not done that? We don't do that?
I didn't see that last year when I watched last year's meeting, but-
If it's helpful, we could say out loud which ones we each are doing. I mean, I'm Human Services, and you're-
I was on Public Safety, but I was going to be switching to Transportation this week.
You actually technically already did.
Yes.
And I'm on Environment and Natural Resource Committee.
And I deferred to Commissioner Persky, so I went to Public Safety.
Okay.
I respect seniority.
Well, and Commissioner Lenzmeyer's General Government, and we can, you know, we certainly can move some of those around. I can't move it around right now, but that's other things we can.
Okay. All right, then the next committee is the Central Minnesota Council on Aging, and we have Commissioner Lenzmeyer and Commissioner Clark on that one. All right, then the Central Minnesota Economic Development 7W District Board, Commissioner Persky and Commissioner Lenzmeyer. Next is the Community Adult Mental Health Initiative Joint Powers Board, and we have Commissioner Notch as the representative. That still works? And then we have the central, sorry, these, too many centrals, Criminal Justice Coordinating Committee, and we have Commissioner Clark, Commissioner Notch, with Commissioner Persky as the alternate. All right, then we have the Emergency Services Board, and we have Commissioner Lenzmeyer as the representative, and Commissioner Notch as the alternate. Okay? All right, next we have the Great River Library Board. The opening there is for District Three. George Fiedler, again, is the representative we've had, and Commissioner Bertram, he, the library board would like to have him back, he submitted an application, and it would be up to you.
I would support that nomination, or appointment.
Is, did he term out on that?
No.
Okay, because, right, he, he is in District Two now, so.
Really? Right. And we do, right, and he's, this is, this, as part of our continuing process, it'll happen as he terms out, but we're trying to spread out who's on things, so we're, where possible, only having somebody serve on one at a time, unless it's something like the Planning Commission, that has the at-large onto the Board of Adjustment.
All right, well, I'll make a note of that. All right, Commissioner Lenzmeyer indicated he wants to continue serving as the District Four Representative.
I know. I could see that.
The next one up is the History Museum Board, and again, that was Commissioner Mergan, so again, you wish to take over that spot. Then we have the HRA Board, and Steve Krone has left that board, and so, Joe, you would like to appoint Mike Hain?
Correct.
All right. And then Commissioner Notch is still reviewing what he wants to do in District Five.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, I do, we were trying to clarify that this morning, and what Neil Fortier emailed me was John Greer was the at-large board member who's terminated.
Oh, that wasn't how the record showed, but okay.
So, and he says that he was, he was recommended by the HRA Board, and they have a John Neal that's interested in filling that vacancy. I don't know that we have an application.
I haven't, I have nothing yet, so I'll have to take care of that the next meeting.
Yeah, because I think John Greer's termed out.
Yeah.
Yes, that's what, that's what Neil says here. And then he does say that he had an opening with Commissioner Persky's district, so you just made that appointment then?
Correct.
Okay, and then he says, not long ago, the bylaws were amended to, that allows an ex officio member that can be appointed by the Stearns County Board, shall appoint the Stearns County Administrator, or the Stearns County Economic Development Director, or a member of the county board to serve as an ex officio, and I don't know that we've done that in the past, but.
We've had Jeff Mergan listed as the non-
Yeah, I was going to say.
As the non-voting member.
Oh, okay, okay.
So there'd be Commissioner Bertram, if you're good with that.
Sure.
Okay.
Mr. Hammons, can we go back to the, let's see, which one, what was it here, with, with George Fiedler at the library board?
Yep.
If, if I look on my sheet here, does his term out in, in January '23?
That, yeah, that means this, this meeting.
Correct, so would, but we would be appointing him to a, a new set, a new three years, as a member of District Two?
We'll have to re, relook at what we can do there.
Yeah, so wouldn't it not make sense if, were we going to term them out, so he would have termed out then?
Well, he started in 2019, so he hasn't termed out.
So he's in his second term.
Okay, I thought, I thought the second number says term ends, that's when their term ends.
No, 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 that's the, the three-year set.
Which we can, but don't always reappoint.
Okay.
And they don't always, they're not always interested in doing it then, but that now needs to be-
I, I was just thinking that this would have been the time to correct that, but he's got one more year left on his three-year term.
No, no, no.
No.
Okay, he's finished his three-year term.
His three-year term is over.
But he's eligible for another three-year term, if he's in the right district, or he's at-large.
Okay.
But he's not in the right district anymore.
No, so we'll, I'll have to relook at what we can do there then.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, let me go back.
Next committee is the Law Library. Commissioner Lenzmeyer, you want to keep working on the Law Library?
Well, I'm sorry, I was reading something here, what?
Law Library.
Law Library. You wish to still be the representative?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. That actually getting something done, took a while.
All right. Then we have MICA. We have Commissioner Lenzmeyer, Commissioner Clark, and it would be Commissioner Bertram as the alternate. Does that work?
Yeah, Mr. Hammons, I'm going to take Lee's spot on there.
All right.
And then-
The MICA Board could certainly use a stronger rural presence, so that was entirely appropriate.
All right. Then we have the One Watershed, One Plan for Mississippi-St. Cloud, that's Commissioner One Watershed, One Plan for the North Fork with the Crow, what, sorry?
Excuse me, we do have alternates for these two.
Oh, you do?
Commissioner Lenzmeyer is the alternate for the One Watershed, One Plan Mississippi.
All right.
And then I have been the alternate for the SOC.
All right.
Not that I've had to do anything. It's really only to go if, if-
That's probably why it wasn't on the sheet before. All right, and so the One Watershed, One Plan for the North Fork with the Crow was Commissioner Mergan, so it would be Commissioner Bertram. Do you know if there was an alternate for that one?
I was alternate.
You were the alternate.
And I don't know if Commissioner Bertram, if you want, you want me to be the primary on there, and you'd alternate?
Whenever, I'll defer to seniority.
Okay, if, if you, you know, because then, being I'm involved on the SOC River One, kind of jump right in, and if you want to switch next year, once you've been to some meetings.
All right, and then on the One Watershed, One Plan SOC, it's Commissioner Notch, and Commissioner Clark is the alternate. All right, which brings us to the Regional Airport Authority.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hammons, the, is that later on in the agenda, those, the two appointments for that one, the Mississippi-St. Cloud Watershed Collaborative, the One Watershed, One Plan, is that the public member, is that an agenda item, or is that now? Because I saw something where there was going to, there were two names being-
Oh, so what this is, this is, the electeds serve on the policy committee, it's one commissioner and one, I can't, I can't say it, Soil and Water Conservation. And then the two names that are coming forward are Citizen Advisory.
And that's coming up in the agenda?
Yeah.
There was on the current agenda, there was number six.
We actually already did it.
Okay, because my only question on that was, again, being new to this, it looks like the City of Kimball, St. Augusta, was part of that one, I didn't know where the members were from.
Oh, so, so part of what's happening, because there's five different counties in it, was there's discussion about, and, and trying to, what we're doing is making recommendations, the policy board still has to decide, but to try to have a nice balance of backgrounds and expertises, we're putting forward somebody from wastewater management, which has to be City of St. Cloud, and then somebody from a lake association, and that happens to be from your district. It was brought up by the Lake Association people, that's where the, the recommendation is from.
And that was my, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hammons, that was my, you know, the, my wanting to know, are they representative of the entire area that's being affected by it? I didn't know where the applicants were from.
We don't, we very unfortunately don't get to have a whole lot of different people on there, and we didn't even get into like the university people are the other experts, but trying to have some balance between, so like Soil and Water Conservation gets to have some balance between, so like Soil and Water Conservation gets to put a couple people forward as well.
You're talking to One Watershed, One Plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, and usually they also have a technical panel?
Yes.
Those are more of the engineering type background.
It's like Cole, Lowen is on the technical committee for all of these. It's great.
Thank you.
All right, the next committee is the Regional Airport Authority. The county has two at-large appointments to this board. One, Marshall Graham, will continue to serve. The other one is, was David Weirs, but he's no longer able to be on that committee, so there were two applications that were submitted to you, a Josh Benson and a Robert Lang. Again, your options are to appoint one of those to continue recruiting or to hold an interview with a, again, a subcommittee of the, of the board.
What are the wishes of the board?
I think it's important enough, Mr. Chairman, and two, because I haven't seen the background of either one, could we wait on that one and maybe get additional names?
Yeah, I think that's appropriate. I actually think we might, they both could be fine, great, but it's so weird, we had so many the first time around, and they've been asking for people with business backgrounds, and so that's part of what we should be looking at, too. We had a couple of great people, but their backgrounds were more on the aviation side. They're looking for business folks.
I would concur with that. You know, again, with the initial opening of those positions was quite competitive. I'm just thinking that some of those members maybe were not aware that it was available.
That's true. We'd probably find that out if there's still, if you think that didn't happen.
All right, let's put that one on hold and continue. All right. Then we have the Regional Rail Authority. We have Commissioner Lenzmeyer, Commissioner Notch, and Commissioner Clark as representatives on that one. Then we have the representatives to the Greater St. Cloud Development Corporation. Commissioner Lenzmeyer is the alternate. Can read my lines.
He's the delegate.
Sorry, I'm getting all my lines mixed up with my glasses.
It is hard.
Yes, so Commissioner Clark and Commissioner Lenzmeyer on there, and I'll defer to Terrell on who's the alternate. No wishes there? I can do it this way. It's a shame to get old. The next one we have is the Joint Airport Zoning Board, and again, we have Commissioner Lenzmeyer and Commissioner Clark on that one.
And that's another one that I don't think's met.
In several years.
I actually was wondering if at some point we're not going to need that one anymore with the airport authority.
Might there be merit in turning that over to that existing airport group? I don't have any strong feelings on it, but you do have a situation where one group is responsible for the land uses around the airport, and, and then these folks are... Well, wait a sec. Is it airport singular or is it plural? Because we have other airports in Stearns County.
At this point, the Regional Airport Authority is just for the St. Cloud Airport.
And then our zoning one is in that also for this?
That's just also for the St. Cloud.
That's why it's a joint powers.
No, I'm sorry I brought it up.
No, I've had the same question.
Well, it's something we can...
Especially because we haven't met.
We can certainly ask the other members and see what their thoughts are, so I can take that for word. Before I get to the solid waste, I just want to point out that the watershed districts, those appointments for citizens are staggered throughout the year, so those will come up when it's, when it's time. So, we won't have to do much with that one. And then we have the Tri-County Solid Waste Management Commission. All of you are on, listed as on there, except that Steve is the alternate.
Correct.
Is that still the wishes of the board?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, then for the watershed districts, Commissioner Notch would be on the Stock River Watershed, and Commissioner Notch would also have the North Fork Crow River Watershed. And then the West Central Minnesota County and Watershed Joint Powers Board is our Commissioners Lenzmeyer and Commissioner Notch, and Lee is the alternate on that one. That still works?
Yeah, I don't know if it's ever met.
Well...
I don't remember. I'm thinking in my head, what's the last meeting, and I can't think of it.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
If they have a meeting.
Just a question, Commissioner Lenzmeyer, your district had changed, are you part of that watershed yet?
That, that's one of the things that passed through my mind, and so that's one of the reasons I don't have a strong feeling on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, my district's entirely in municipalities now, although there are parts that are...
Yeah, I've got two watersheds in my district.
The Stock River goes right through.
Yeah, Stock River, I walk by.
This is all part of the Stock River Watershed.
I can double-check with our GIS folks and just make sure, you know, how the lines work and bring that back, see if there's been changes.
Okay.
Okay, and then the last one is the Crow River Joint Powers Board, again, Commissioner Notch, and it would be Commissioner Bertram. All right, so, sorry for all of the ins and outs and, and confusions on some of those, but it's a long and drudgingly administrative task. So, are there, can I get a motion to approve all of the changes that we've made at this point?
Move that.
Okay.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I've got a motion in a second to approve the discussion on positions made here. I would like to just see, were there any corrections, because we went through them all, or any changes we'd like to make on any of those, before we go ahead and do it as a blanket statement? Any other changes? Okay, if not, then I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hammons, what I would ask is for my appointments, please identify when they meet, where they meet, so I can plan my January schedule, because obviously I don't know that. And then, two, the watershed appointments, Randy, you and I will hopefully talk today.
Yep.
I do have one application or interest, but I need to better understand where the watershed, because evidently there's two appointments in two different watershed districts that need to be recommended.
There's one other watershed that's not on, the Clearwater River Watershed District. It doesn't have any board appointments, but it has a member that Jeff's working on.
Okay.
That's termed out, or he's moved out, that we need to replace, so I'd like to nail that down if I could today, Randy.
Sure.
And this will not surprise you. You have already made the request that we get calendar invitations for these, so they were adjusted in email, and it shows up in our Outlook appointments.
Okay.
So, we remember to get...
That certainly helps.
Yes.
And I believe the watershed appointments are always, is it June and July?
They're staggered, spring.
Yeah, they're staggered.
All right, I will update this and send it out to everyone, so you can all remember all the brain cells that we've damaged as we went through this exercise, so you can have that. Again, the ones that are still open, I'll send you, again, a list of what ones those are, so you can help with recruitment, and we can move forward if there's any other issues that you have regarding those. Looking at the last year's board meeting when we did this, there was a request to always bring it back annually, the per diems for the committees, and so that was as well in the board packet. I've reached out with all the departments. There was no recommendations for changes to the per diems for any of the committees for 2023. There was a suggestion from Randy to add a committee to this for the Board of Equalization, that for training, they receive $50 as a per diem. So, that's the only change.
Mr. Chair, I actually was surprised they didn't already get that, so I would move that.
I agree with that. I would think that with that training, that would be appropriate.
Yeah, we're required to have trained members on there, not all of them, but a majority of them, so it is a required thing.
Okay. Then I'll look for that motion.
I move that.
I got a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion on that per diem? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Mr. Chair, did we do roll on the appointments?
Pardon?
Did we do the roll call?
Oh, yeah, we voted.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know.
All right. Then we'll move on to the next item, under administration, in reference to the optional sales tax.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and members, what's before you is, is an action that really does two things. It, it makes a request to the state legislator to allow the county to adopt a local option sales tax, and that would require a referendum, and, and it also makes a statement about the regional impact of the, of the, of the project. So, and of course, the project is, is our, is, is new jail, new sheriff's office, new courts, that we've been looking at for quite some time. We reviewed the financial situation of it, or financial, financial options back in, at the end of November, and I just wanted maybe Randy to take a second and, and remind us of how we looked at that, how it could be, you know, part property tax, part sales tax, or all sales tax. And so, this resolution suggests a sales tax of .375%, which would, which would pay for the debt service, the 30-year debt service on the project, but Randy's going to summarize that a little bit.
So, the, the charts that you see on the screen are for the middle option. Remember, there's, there was two downtown options and then an alternative site option. So, this one falls in the middle. The first one is the quarter cent sales tax, how it would fall. It would require two bond issues under this scenario, and there would be an additional levy impact with a quarter cent under all the different scenarios. And the second one is a 3/8% tax on that same scenario. We would make the graph, you know, the debt service be a little smooth. There would be no levy impact under any of the scenarios for 3/8. No property tax impact for a 3/8 cent sales tax, so that would be entirely paid by the sales tax, where the quarter cent would have a levy impact. And on the bottom, there's a chart of, of that. As you can see, on the right side, the initial levy impact under each of those scenarios, and what percent of the levy that would be if you did the quarter cent sales tax. So, 3/8, no levy impact, a quarter percent, there would be a one-time levy impact, and then after that, we would be fine, we wouldn't be increasing it anymore, so...
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Clark?
I know we've, we've talked about this a couple of times, and feel for Commissioner Bertram the first day of getting to do this, but you were participating in our last meeting. I don't know if it's appropriate, if you want to have discussion now or a motion, but I would certainly move this packet with the .38 cent. I think it, we're going to need to go to the voters on this, and it's going to otherwise be both, it's going to be on both the proper, the property taxes and the sales tax, and if we're serious about this passing, it being clean and being able to see that it's not going to impact the property taxes. Sorry, Janet, I didn't, I didn't sit forward enough. We also, as, as Randy has shown us, and Sarah, right now, because of our lower sales tax on, for transportation, for our roads and bridges, we are lower than the other counties. So, even as it relates to people living or purchasing in our three-county area, it will make us really pretty close to where the others are. So, that's what I'm thinking anyways. I, I think, I think we've got some real challenges if we go with a split.
Mr. Chairman, Randy, I assume for the legislation, you have to be specific, and you can't change it.
Correct. You have to state the amount.
Right. And we, one, the initial meeting, and I've done additional reading on materials I was shared with, you know, I think the 3/8 makes sense as well. So, knowing what I know, I did try to brush up on this as best as I could, knowing that we had to make a decision, but again, a lot of things have to fall in place, the legislature's got to allow it, pass it, and then, of course, we have to get the referendum passed, so...
Just, just by way of process, what needs to happen here is that the board adopts this resolution or a variation of it, it needs to be presented to the tax chairs of both the Senate and the, and the House, and then, of course, we need, we need it to be included in law, in the tax bill, and then, as, as we've talked about, we would hold a referendum. That referendum, as, under current law, would have to be in November of 2024. In the tax bill that came close to being adopted last legislative session, there was actually a change in that, where we could hold it in any November, and you can see we worded the resolution so that if, if we wanted to, we could even do it as early as November of '23. So, correct, we have a lot of process to do here, this would kick it off, and of course, the legislative session goes all the way until May '21, I think, or somewhere into May. So, there, there is time, but, but this has to be submitted before the end of January if we're going to be in this, this year's legislative session.
Mr. Chair, I have a question as well. So, is there, if it looks like the, the 3/8 cents definitely covers it, is there any option to go a little less than that? Or do they always stay with quarters and...
Well, what would happen is if we paid everything off, and there was still time remaining, so if we paid it off in, you know, 26 years, then we would end the sales tax. We wouldn't claim it anymore after that. But once you set the rate, that's going to be the rate you're going to ask the voters, that's going to be the rate.
Dr. Williams, I, I'm a little bit concerned about this. I don't know if we're being premature, and I guess I need to have a little bit better understanding, because I don't believe we actually decided on the plan we want to move forward with. My understanding is that we were looking at a very large amount, and we had a number of scenarios, but we were still going to determine, you know, which scenario. There's a considerable contrast if we include the attorney's offices and the judicial part in the plan. Would that not be true?
Mr. Chair, there is, of course, a difference in the options and the cost of the options, yes. How you would fund either one of those, I think what we've said here is we're in a $260 to $310 million range, and so whichever choice we make, I think, at least, we're recommending this is the best financing method for whatever we do in the end, unless it's dramatically different. And, and if we're going to pursue that, we really need to do it in January, so it, it might feel premature because we haven't identified exactly what we're going to fund yet, but if, but if we don't identify funding, then I think, then, then I think we don't have any choices. But you certainly could wait till your next meeting in January, but you can't wait any longer than that into, in, to get into this session.
Okay, I was, I was just wondering about the specifics of the financing, because I'd hate to, you know, pigeonhole us into a situation where we're stuck with a scenario that we have. Also, my concern would be the amount, and what we're doing is, as far as taking it to the voters and being impalatable for the voters to accept it.
Mr. Chair, I totally agree that, you know, probably the next step in all of this is to, to begin, to draft some kind of a plan of how we're going to engage the public on the project, and, and even if this is adopted and put in law, the board could then choose not to go to a referendum and not use this tool.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, but Commissioner Lenzmeyer, I think...
Yeah, I think we, don't we, in effect, then have two deadlines? We can commit to what we need to do for the end of this month, but I don't, is there, in effect, a practical deadline? Should we decide at a later date not to?
I think you can always decide not to, right? I mean, there's...
That's my point.
We're asking the legislature to do this, but, you know, this is our ask, what they pass is also a different thing, and...
Yeah.
Even if they pass it, right, you, you can still say, we're not going to do it, right? You can't, you can't, once they, you know, once they set an amount, you can't change that amount, though.
Okay. So, we have more flexibility than we realize.
The, Mr. Chair, members, the, the legislator, if all this would go as we want, if you adopt this today, the legislator would authorize us to use the sales tax. You, in the end, still need to have a referendum and adopt an ordinance establishing that, that, that tax, so it is still up to you, if you get authorization to do it.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I share your concern. I mean, this, this has kept going up and up and up in cost in the last year. It's kind of amazing how much even pre-inflationary issues, and I think the important thing for us to remember is this preserves the, this is the option, otherwise, we don't have the option. I would still like to see some cost-saving measures out of our consultants. We still have a lot of decisions to make, but if we don't move pretty quickly, we're going to have a really hard time getting this through the legislature this session. So, because of the fact that it gives us the option to say, decide at some point that maybe we're not ready or we're not going, that's why I, I support this. I also think it's got an opportunity for the public to weigh in, and we need to make the case for it, because it is such a large amount of money. Dr. Williams knows, I'm, I'm a little concerned that we didn't already have a bill being jacketed, because this is going to be a crazy session. They've got so many things to do, and with new chairs, and Rust obviously was a former tax chair in the House, but as with new chairs and new majorities and everything else, I've got so many moving pieces, including some things we really want for our property own, our property taxpayers, our house owners, that this really just moves us forward to give us, this is a tool, and again, otherwise, we could come back, but it'll be next year that we come back, so we'd lose a year.
Mr. Chairman, Randy, I assume that we know there's a whole cross-section across the state of Minnesota of tax... Mr. Chairman, Randy, I assume that we know there's a whole cross-section across the state of Minnesota of tax requests that have been passed by the legislature. Do we know the variations of what the highest percentage has been, what the lowest percentage is? Or maybe we should get that if we don't.
Sarah might be able to help us with this, but I know there was half percent for which was that.
And the only reason I ask is to help sell this. I know it's not going to be the highest, won't be the lowest. And then the other, so what, go ahead, why don't you?
Yeah, I was just going to let you know, Commissioner, that there is out on the Department of Revenue's site, the local sales tax in all jurisdictions, and so I can go back through and make a summary of that. It's quite thick, so I don't, I would probably just look at the counties.
Mr. Chair.
I think that would be helpful, Mr. Chairman, I think that would be helpful just to give us a flavor. And then again, to sell this, to be able to say this isn't the highest request, it's not the lowest request. But, you know, and then the other concern would be after the first meeting that I attended, then there was talk after the meeting about adding on to the project. So we didn't even kind of get our arms around what the actual dollar amount would be in then. But if we did this for another 300 or 30 million, we could also do this. Well, we really need to nail down what are we going to be doing and then stick with what it is that we're going to be doing and not try to add on, in my opinion.
Right. So in, in what Mike has put together is, is what we're going to spend it on. And that's all we can spend it on. So once, once this gets into motion, we define the project, that's all we can spend the sales tax dollars on, the bonding for that. And, and we'd have to go back to the legislature to change that. But we, we define the project, sales tax, help pay for the bonds for that project, that's it. There's no expanding that unless we go back and ask.
And Mr. Chairman, the other option would be obviously if we just chose to potentially spend another 30 million to add on to it or something. I don't think we should do that. Whatever this project's going to be, my sensitivity is that it is what the project is and then not that we take additional funding somehow and add on to the project.
Right. When I meant, when I said the project is, you know, the project could have some increases or decreases in different areas. They may change the amount of the project, but we can't take sales tax dollars and spend it on a park or something like that, right? It's going to be on a law enforcement center and the costs associated with that, so.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, what I meant is specifically for the, the site, the center. You know, whatever that center is going to be, I think we should define what that is. Not if we use the sales tax monies for that or not, but we should define what that project's going to be and then stick with that project and not suddenly add on a year later saying, well, if we added X number of dollars of our own, we could add this to it. Let's figure out what that center is going to look like and then stick to it. Again, as my thought, as my two cents.
Commissioner Clerk.
Yeah, the, the one thing we do know is that the legislature has many times done half cents sales tax, sales tax for local options. So we're under that. We're not coming, that, that's the good news. We're not out, outside of that scope. The other thing that we should just be aware of, the city of St. Cloud is going to be asking for like $150 million in bonding. So it's going to be a big regional year of asks. We clearly are demonstrating though how important this is from a regional standpoint. And, and I believe Commissioner Bertram, the, the scope really has been done. There's been some questions about later on if we would add another pod because it was needed. But I totally agree with you. I think the other, in terms of not just willy-nilly adding, we know what it is. This is what we're going for. The main thing that we've heard and you heard in that meeting is that the courts are saying, don't. You know, we know that there might be, as construction's happening, a minimal period of time where the court and the jail would be in two different places, but please don't split us up. I mean, I think that's been our, the loud thing we've heard recently. But no matter what, this is a lot of money. It's, it, it could fund many school districts' needs and it's, so it gets to be a really big challenge.
Randy, then from my understanding, we, we would be having the, the request would be for the law enforcement center with no add-ons. We wouldn't be putting in, we want an additional parking lot at one of the facilities or a roofing project or anything like that. It's going to remain specifically to the law enforcement center.
Right. It's for the law enforcement center.
Jail and Justice Center.
Justice Center. Right. I, you said the parking lot. I mean, if we right now have a plan for so many spots and we determine we need to spend any more, that still would be part of the project.
Okay. And including of course, the demolition of the existing buildings and everything else. All right. And upgrades that we would need, yeah.
Right.
All right.
I'll second Commissioner Clerk's motion. I don't think we have one, or did, or did he?
Commissioner Clerk did make a motion.
I was, I was asking whether he wanted it as a motion. So if you want to make it, I'll, I'll be happy to second it.
Oh, I thought you made the motion.
All right. I'll make it. I'll make the motion that we approve this and the three eight cents sales tax, recognizing that what this, we're approving is being able to seek this as a tool.
As an option.
Right.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. I have a motion and a second on option two on the sales tax. Any other further discussion? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, okay, the motion passes.
That was decent discussion.
Mr. Chair, just as we get to presenting this to those tax chairs, I'll probably, hopefully, we'll have a commissioner or two actually do that in person when we get to that. So we'll try to make those arrangements.
All right. I'm a little bit concerned on the, on the agenda I have. We have a break and then issues by commissioner. I don't think we necessarily need a break, but I think we can move on to issues by commissioner. So I'll start down on that end. Commissioner Lenzmer.
No issues. Gosh, I mean, you know, we've only been two days into '23. Shouldn't have any problems yet.
Okay. The new boy on the block, Commissioner Bertram.
Welcome. No issues.
No issues. Commissioner Nodge.
Well, I'd like to thank Commissioner Mergan for his years of service and welcome Commissioner Bertram on board. And other than that, at this point, I don't have anything either.
Okay.
Either, either.
Commissioner Clerk.
Yeah, I too welcome and thank Commissioner Mergan. I guess one thing, want to thank our, our highway department again. They had to go through some pretty crazy plowing and it looks like they may be about to do that again as well as the sheriff's department and all of their work trying to help keep people safe.
And I too would like to again echo my thanks to Commissioner Mergan and everyone that, that made it a good year for 2022 and look forward to 2023. And without anything else, I will adjourn this meeting.
Good job.